I'm gonna tap.
We're on tape, now.
Okay, we're taping here. We need a motion to come out of executive session, please.
I'll make a motion that we reconvene our meeting and come out of executive session.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
We need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn our work session.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
Now, we're ready to work. You okay, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. The press in the Down Beach Current were notified of this meeting and a copy of same was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and on the municipal website. The meeting will come to order and we'll stamp for flag salute. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all. Would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Becker.
Here.
Blumberg.
Here.
Here.
What is your pleasure? We have a minutes of our May 1st meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
Taubbi.
Yes.
We will open public comment. Mr. Pearson, for any subject you'd like to speak, you have three minutes.
I miss Stanley Pearson. I live on South Thurlo Avenue and my only comment is that I feel that the merchants that have stores are taking for granted that they can put stuff out on the sidewalk like a sidewalk sale every day. It's no good. It looks terrible for our community. You don't let people who live here have sidewalk sales every day and they shouldn't have it. Merchants shouldn't have it. It's dangerous, especially the one that owns the surf shop. He had stuff on both sides, surfboards, bathing suits, shoes. It's no good. It doesn't look good, especially for the classiness of Margate. It looks like South Philly and it really shouldn't be that way. South Philly too, so fine.
I'm not familiar with what our ordinance is for sidewalk sales, but we should look into it.
Excuse me, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. I know it's the responsibility of the Merchants Association and if they have to come down on those people, they have to do it. And it's our responsibility or your responsibility to make sure the Merchants Association does that.
I agree with you 100 percent and I have spoken to the MBA, the Mordei Business Association. They come before the commission every year. We approve a list of dates that they can have sidewalk sales and they have agreed to kind of police their own department. So if you have a problem, either come back here or you come see me at the hardware store, whatever you prefer.
The sidewalk sales are fine. There's nothing wrong with it.
Okay.
But not every day.
Okay. I'll get you a copy of the list, actually.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Joy.
Hi.
If you could do the next meeting. Can you wait?
No. I'm hungry. Are you ready? Forget exactly when it was, but Rich received an email from a team that is out in California called Team Will Charity and their whole organization is to bring awareness to our community in general about kids who suffer with childhood cancer and to also disseminate hero cards during the year in their local communities. And I think for about, I should know more. I don't want to mess it up, but about five times they've done a cross-country bike journey. And this year they're going to leave from San Francisco and they're going to land in Margate at the end of their journey. And I have spoken to Rich Helfand down at Lucy the Elephant and he and I and everyone thought it would be a great idea for the team to land at Lucy. They're going to take their bicycles down onto the beach and dip their tires into the Atlantic Ocean to signify the end of their journey. I have Chief Wolfson and Chief Tabasso have agreed to do a police escort once the team gets from Longport into Margate with a lot of sirens and a lot of awareness. And I have already had some teachers of our high school have their students make hero cards, which if you look at the bottom, they've already sent theirs out to the team and they'll be distributing those cards along the way. And this is a really, really positive thing that I'm involved in. And Rich, I don't, I think I shared with you that the night before you emailed Andrew, my boss, the information, I had prayed to my father, who had passed, to bring me something positive to do with my time, to help me move on from his being gone. And the next day, Andrew showed me the email and said, what do you think? And I said, I want it. I want to take care of this and I want to do this. So in a way, thank you. And I hope that the people that I've emailed today, this PDF, will go ahead and help me advertise it a little bit to get a lot of people to show up. And there's also a little boy at the Ross School and kindergarten right now. He was in remission from his own childhood cancer diagnosis and I would like to somehow, I've already spoken to the father. He said he and his son will be there. I'd like to somehow make it really special for him too, since it is personal for them as well. And I'm sorry for crying, but those of you that know me know that I'm a big cryer. And a couple things for the chief. I don't know if we talked about the parking situation on Decatur Avenue. When they arrive, they'll have at least two big RVs with them. Okay. And I've spoken to Jim Cahill down at the library because after, they're going to the pavilion also for the parking down there. And I guess I should reach out to the Longport Chief of Police and Fire to let them know that the team will be also coming through Longport. Okay. Okay. And I guess that's it. I'm gonna leave extra with you guys. Maybe you could circulate them through the other staff who I'd hoped I would catch, but somehow I missed one I didn't jump up here.
And you know what, Joy?
Thank you, Joy. Sorry you had to wait.
Sensitivities are virtue.
Anyone else?
Mike, I might, I might just suggest, Joy, if it's agreeable, that we could create a little proclamation for this boy that is going to be there and maybe honor him on that day as Team Will and whatever, if they're agreeable, whatever his name is, and you know, give him the day and maybe...
Maybe like a Team Will ambassador for Margate?
That would be great.
Joy, you can work on that.
Yeah, I'll work on it.
Agree on that here.
And then we can put it on our form and present it.
Thank you. And also, obviously, I forgot to mention that it would be great if you, whoever and everyone, the commissioners, department heads, whoever can be there to welcome the team would be much appreciated as well.
Thank you, Joy.
Steve Altman, 9003 Empress Avenue, Margate. It's so much more enjoyable to follow Joy than it is to follow others. In all sincerity, I want to congratulate Mr. Abbott for engaging in dialogue with a citizen who stood at this mic last session, the work session, because I've been urging all of you to have dialogue with people who stand here. I don't, I don't understand why you guys don't have dialogue with each other. I don't understand why you don't have dialogue with us. And you know, what I know about democracy in Washington and Trenton, hearing from our elected officials, what they're thinking as they're developing their ideas, I think is the best thing that a commissioner, a mayor can do. So I thank Mr. Abbott for engaging in dialogue and I hope it rubs off. Secondly, a topic that I've discussed before, and this is directed to helping Brenda. Her comments are very often very prepared. They're very thoughtful. She reads her comments and I know what she believes in. The problem is, we can't hear her. More than half of what Brenda read to us earlier is lost because of the inadequacy of this room. I keep saying over and over again, we could buy plywood at Mr. Becker's hardware store.
Uh-uh.
And we could, we could take egg cartons and staple it to it and hang it from the ceilings and the walls. The problem is, this room has a ceiling height more than double what you would have in the old commission meeting in the old city hall. The sound just reverberates. It's terrible. If you were to sit out here, you would hear that we can't hear Brenda. So for your sake, get on the bandwagon and talk to your other commissioners and for a few thousand bucks, we'd all have a better meeting room and we'd be able to hear your prepared statements. So again, I urge you, buy some baffles, hang them up. It'll probably be one of the cheapest investments you make in improving communications in the city. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve. Tom, would you do me a favor and talk to Fred Burna about the sound in the room and see if we can... Thank you. Anyone else? A motion to close public comment.
Hold on.
So, 22 West Drive. I trust Mr. Deeney's power of recollection far exceeds the mayor. And before he left for his cross-country adventure, there was a discussion about that state mandated canine census statute, which the Scaf law commissioners, year in and year out ignore. Mr. Deeney, before he left, correct me, Mr. Deeney, if I'm wrong, I don't, I'm humble enough to take correction. He said, talk to the chief, meaning Chief Wolfson, see if he would do it. And you know something, Mr. Deeney? Chief Wolfson was magnanimous. Magnanimous. However, one slight, one slight, one slight stipulation that the $100,000 that can be yearly collected go to the police department. Since we're not getting the $100,000 anyway, I suggest that we allow the police department to keep the $100,000. Don't you think that's a swell idea, Mr. Deeney?
Chief probably does.
What about you? I hate to put you on the spot after your vacation.
Glad to give the money that's necessary.
Well, that would be $100,000, I would think, chief. It would cover the cost of one employee. I think that's an adventure well worth doing. Why don't you explore that more with Chief Wolfson? I think it's a grand idea. And while you were out of the state, Mr. Deeney, up in Patterson, New Jersey, a few weeks back, a 13-year-old teenager was mauled to death, mauled to death, and another teenager seriously injured by a canine. And of course, this canine dog owner didn't bother to register that dog.
15 seconds, John.
Let me, let me finish, Mayor.
You finish in 15 seconds, sir.
Oh, we'll finish. Can it go off? 1500? What I'm saying is that for $5, a $5 cloth jaw strap that doesn't impede eating or drinking by the dog, but it does prevent fatal mayhem by dogs, and not necessarily pit bulls per se. This dog that killed the 13-year-old teenager in Patterson a few weeks back happened to be a bull mastiff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Sharon Simon, 424 North Thurlo Avenue. You don't have to live in North Jersey to experience Chris Christie-style politics, where political and personal gains are emphasized over the tasks of governing. Right here in Margate, we have to deal with Mayor Becker's and Commissioner Taubbi's combined individual agendas. What is astounding is even when they don't agree, they either look the other way or vote in each other's favor. If they are not committing the wrongdoing, they are an accessory to it. Better to support each other and have a united front against Commissioner Blumberg, Tom Hiltner, or anyone who has the audacity to challenge them, all at the taxpayers' expense. For instance, Mayor Becker publicly does not support Commissioner Taubbi's comments about marketplace reality and even apologized personally, yet he cast the winning vote to spend up to $10,000 in legal fees to try and so Brenda, Commissioner Taubbi, could further her agenda. Taubbi was permitted to vote even though there was clearly a conflict and the mayor supported her vote. Commissioner Blumberg's lone no vote was overruled as usual and the taxpayers are footing the bill. The two of you hired the auditing firm of Ford Scott to aid in your attack on Tom Hiltner as evidenced by the management letter that reflected Commissioner Taubbi's report. You have put the city at risk for legal fees and a potentially large settlement. You support each other's vote to continue this senseless fight because you would rather spend hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money than admit that you were wrong. I believe this is the first and only whistleblower suit that JIP hasn't, won't cover, hasn't covered. I could be wrong on that. And the list goes on. There is no acceptable excuse or rebuttal for these actions. We are not buying the argument that the city is the victim and has to defend itself. You two are the perpetrators who misuse your power to victimize targeted employees and community members. It is these individuals that are forced to spend their hard-earned money to defend themselves while you two, while you two spend hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars' money to fight your own personal and political agendas. While it is a privilege to serve the public, you are not entitled to special privileges. As elected officials, you are held to a higher standard and are accountable for everything you do and say in an official capacity. You are both employees and employers and have the power to greatly affect people's lives, making yourself and therefore the taxpayers liable. On behalf of the citizens of Margate, please, please, do not respond with one of your prepared speeches or opinion letters justifying your actions, attacking someone else, claiming that I have rewritten history or that my information is wrong. Just please stop. Commissioner Taubbi, you are so uncomfortable spending people's money on legal fees if they don't vote on it. What about all these legal fees you're already spending? If you think it's a good thing, you'll spend all our money. If you don't, you don't want any money spent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just, Mrs. Simon constantly brings up the whistleblower lawsuit and I just, we are defending the Margate spending money for defense. I just wanted to make that clear.
Dan Gottlieb, 47 North Nassau. Personally, I want to commend Mr. Altman for his comments about being able to engage in dialogue. It does seem like oftentimes I stand up here or someone else stands up here and we ask a question and sometimes we get an answer and sometimes everyone just looks at me and it's, it's, it's a good suggestion to have dialogue at these meetings because there's very little other opportunity to engage in that, although I will say that, Mike, you've been mamentable to some conversations that didn't necessarily take place in this room, so I thank you for that. And Maury, you as well. And Brenda, I just know we don't see eye to eye on the issue, so I choose to not bother you when you're with your family across the street. But what I want to say is that I think it has become apparent to me and to other people that talk to me about this issue on a regular basis, that it's obvious that Commissioner Blumberg wants to stand behind and support the voters and he wants to take on all comers as it relates to keeping this project off the beach because that's what the citizens have told this commission. Commissioner Taubbi, not so much. I hear you saying on one side that you now support the voters because they voted no and then on the other side, I see you wanting to organize the perpetrators, if you want to call them that, the people who will stand to benefit from this project, to come into our town and tell us why this project is so great. Our citizens have given you direction. Words are not what we need now. We need action. Mayor, I would like to see, since I believe and I could be wrong, that Commissioner Taubbi is on one side of this issue, Commissioner Blumberg seems to be on the other. Mayor, I'd like to see you or at least answer the question. You were on the fence about the project. In fact, it was your idea to hold the referendum to help give you and your fellow commissioners direction on the issue. The voters provided clear direction on the issue. They don't want this project. You have stated publicly that you will honor the will of the people. Are you still committed to that, yes or no?
I have never wavered from that, Dan.
Okay. Then my question is, as the leader of this town, I think it is incumbent upon you to notify the New Jersey DEP, the Army Corps of Engineer, the State Attorney General's Office, that we will not give up easements, which we've already...
I've already done that.
And we have no interest in participating in this project.
I have done that, Dan. I have sat face to face with the Commissioner of the DEP and told him we would not participate in this project. I have sat face to face with the Deputy Attorney General when he asked for easements, said, I will in no way ever give you easements. That's already been done, Dan.
But it just seems, it just seems to me that we're letting them come in, that we're just letting them come in. We've gotten a ruling from the Attorney General and that's the ruling we're going to go with and that's, and it's green light, come on in. We can't do anything about it, the Attorney General. I repeat myself.
15 seconds.
I insist that it is incumbent upon you, as a commission, to spend the de minimis amount of money to hire an outside counsel that will advise this commission on whether or not the Attorney General has a legal leg to stand on. And I don't, I don't want to necessarily rely on Solicitor Abbott for that opinion. We've gotten his opinion. We need another one.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to close public comment, please.
I just wanted to say before we close that, Dan, I believe in talking with Solicitor Abbott just now, that we do in fact have a letter that suggests and states clearly the points that you just made. So Scott's going to try and get that.
Mike, don't we have a letter?
And because I've never seen it.
From the city to the DEP, same.
What we're trying to find out.
I know there was a letter. You know what? Maury, let me, let me check the records. It's been so many months ago. I know we have correspondence to the state, exactly what it says. I know, I'm certain the mayor has told them, we don't want the project because I've been involved in some of those conversations. Is there a letter? Let me double check.
Okay.
Since the ruling from the Attorney General has the mayor put it right into the state, you've seen your letter, you've received your letter, we don't want you here.
Let me think about that. I know we went to Trenton and met with them.
When? We had a meeting in Longport maybe a month ago, Dan, with the Commandant of the Corps of Engineers Northeast Division. After that meeting, I had a private meeting with Dave Appy, who's the Assistant Attorney General, at which point he asked about the easements and that's when that took place. I said, no. Scott, I believe you were at that meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Wahlberg was at that meeting. So yes, it has been since after that letter. Thank you.
I'll think about it. I know we copy everybody. I'm not, I'm not sure what the letters all say. I'll get them to Commissioner Blumberg.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to see them. It's important. I'd like to see them. Thank you.
Motion to close public comment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
Mr. Taubbi.
Yes.
Is there any comment on resolutions?
And ordinances, Mayor.
Second reading of ordinances, John.
I sort of note in the second reading, 6, 4. 9. I'm sorry. 4, 9.
4, 9.
4, 9, Mayor.
4, 9.
Are you with us today?
I am, John.
Are you kicking on the weight cylinders? Then give me a compare and contrast between the 1,670,250 in '09 and number 24, 1,670,250. Is that a typographical error, Mayor? Perhaps? Maybe Mr. Deeney wasn't around to correct it.
Tom? I'm going to try to answer your question. I may not have understood it entirely, but...
I think it was pretty crystal clear.
I know you do, but I didn't. But that's why we're having a dialogue. '09 is intended to be tabled tonight on recommendation of the Bond Council. '10 replaces '09 and the difference in the numbers has to do with the requirement by the state now, as explained by the Finance Director earlier, to appropriate $25,000 as a down payment, not 5%, which would normally be required, but 25,000. The original intent, when it was introduced in March, was hopefully not to have to put any down payment down for that ordinance. However, the state require, has kind of compromised and required 25,000. That is the difference in the two numbers. The first one will be tabled, the second one will be introduced.
Well, that's all new to us and it certainly isn't clarified here.
You missed that at the first...
Was it clarified in my, was my response as crystal clear as your question?
I think so.
Perhaps you were napping.
Perhaps I was. I've been known to do that standing up. Mayor, your keen attention to number 1 ought 8 on resolutions? And with that pen, Mayor, could you take down a few key questions? I'm sure the chief would give them to you, but I'll save him the effort. You got your pen ready, Mayor?
I'm ready.
Who, what, when, where, why, how, and how much? This $30,000 to prepare a strategic recovery planning report. Who's getting this $30,000, Mayor?
May I answer, Mayor?
You may.
Mr. Attala was here earlier this evening.
You missed that also, John.
Sleep at the switch like you, Mayor.
Sleep, Tom.
Matty? I will ask the city clerk to verify what I'm saying here, because I've had conversation with him. The $30,000 in parentheses is an error.
Another error?
Another error.
I'll tell you, we're all human.
We're all human.
While you're at it, Mr. Deeney, could you tell me what happened to that $70,000 beach tractor? I don't see it here tonight on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Did it fall into the water by chance?
Could be.
Could be? Might be?
To answer your original question, the intent is to ask the commission tonight to do two things. One is to accept the report of Mr. Attala, who was made orally at the 4 o'clock meeting. And the second is to authorize the city government to apply for the nine grants that he outlined in his report. There is no money being expended to do that. The upside is, we might receive over $400,000 in grants and there is no downside.
I appreciate that.
And no expenditure.
I appreciate that. And the $70,000 tractor issue?
I have no idea where that relates. It's not on the agenda, sir.
Well, that's why I'm asking you, what happened to it?
We are reviewing the bids, each of the bids that were submitted, see if they're in compliance.
That seems mighty steep for a tractor, city clerk.
Yeah, it was a little high. That's why we're reviewing it.
And you know, city tractors could last, they have a lifespan of up to 40 years or more. or more.
We're seeing saltwater.
Thank you, John. Your time's-
You're most welcome, Mayor. So take that under advisement, city clerk. 70 grand? In fact, I might suggest we get a dual-purpose tractor with a front-end loader or something for that kind of money?
Sharon Simon, 424 North Urlo Avenue. 108, just a quick question. This is authorizing us to spend $30,000 for the report? Is that what the application is, or it's, first, is it, is it like a contract? That's, I guess, my question.
It's exactly the question that was just asked by the previous speaker.
I was busy talking.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
So we'll repeat it for the record twice.
Okay.
The $30,000 was a mistake. We are not expending any money. We're applying for the $400,000 worth of grants under nine different categories that Mr. Attala talked about at four o'clock.
Gotcha.
It's a mistake.
Okay. So if we were paying $30,000, which we're not, because it's a mistake, you would have to have a resolution or-
Yes, right.
To authorize that and have a contract, correct?
Right.
Unlike, we're still paying the attorney for the whistleblower suit, and we have no contract. That was my point. Thank you.
That's your point.
Anyone else? Motion to close public comment, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Tobbie.
Yes.
Tom?
Okay, ordinance 2014 09, as previously explained, will be tabled with a motion. We're going to table it pending further recommendations by Bond Council.
All right, I make a motion, we table ordinance number nine.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Tobbie.
Yes.
Ordinance 2014 24, again, as Rich explained, replaces 09 with a down payment change. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Tobbie.
Yes.
Resolution 104 authorizes payment claims and payroll. Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Tobbie.
Yes.
105 authorizes the city clerk's office to record a lien for the costs associated with the demolition of 308 North Essex. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Tobbie.
Yes.
106 authorizes a lien redemption for block 201.05, Lot 93.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Tobbie.
Yes.
107 authorizes payment to Colmar in the amount of 1143 08.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Tobbie.
Yes.
And then we have the two resolutions now, as previously explained by Rich. One, the first one will accept the strategic planning recovery, strategic recovery planning report as submitted by Jim Attala. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Tobbie.
Yes.
And the last resolution authorizes Attala Associates to make applications for the various, the nine various post-SANDY planning assistant grants as outlined in the May 2014 report.
All right, and we're scratching the 30,000 to prepare.
Yeah, that's, yes.
I make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Tobbie.
Yes.
Have anything else, Tom?
Mayor, we, we're going to put it on the record that you're authorized to sign that LERP or the Land Use Regulation DEP for Exeter Avenue and the Beach, the homeowner, no cost to the city. Homeowner's going to replace a portion of the bulkhead there.
Good.
Tom, you're, you're good with that.
Yes, that's a resolution. It'll be in a minute.
Do we need a motion for that?
If you want, I mean, I don't think we need a resolution, but if you want to do by acclamation, I mean, everybody agreed in the workshop.
Correct. Okay. Anything else? Anybody?